It's a legislative sentiment for Katie Powers, who the town nominated for a Spirit of America Award last year for her service as a teacher in this community. So I'm going to read this form and then we'll get it delivered to her so she can have it. So it says, "Be known to all, be the members of the seventh House of Representatives joined in recognizing Katie Powers of West Bath, recipient of the Spirit of America Foundation Award. The Spirit of America Foundation was established to encourage and promote volunteerism, and the foundation presents awards to honor local individuals, organizations, or projects in appreciation of community service. We extend our congratulations and best wishes, and we had ordered that this official expression of sentiment be sent forthwith on behalf of the 131st Legislature and the people of the state of Maine, signed by Senator President John Jackson and Speaker of the House Rachel Talcott Ross. It's also co-sponsored by your representative, Allison Heffley, who's here with you this evening as well." And I just want to say, I really take pleasure in presenting these awards because I know that our communities really work the way they do when we live in these wonderful communities because of all the volunteering efforts that go into them. So every one of you, all the people up here and everyone in this community and all the communities that I represent that volunteer, that give of themselves their time, their talents, sometimes their treasure, to make our communities the great places they are to live, deserve recognition, and I'm delighted to be able to present this one. And thank you for nominating Katie for this award. So thank you very much and have a great town meeting.
As a reminder for town meeting, please hold up your card when voting. If you have a question, please address the moderator and begin by introducing yourself. You can also use the microphone at the center. The first article is to choose a moderator to preside over town meeting.
I nominate Jill Mary to moderate.
Do I hear a motion that nomination ceases?
No.
Motion's have been made and seconded that nomination ceases. I now have three written ballots for the nominated moderator. Please let me know if you would like to vote. I now declare voting to be closed. We have three votes for Jill Mary. I ask that moderator, Mary, come forward to be sworn in. Hi Jill Mary.
Hello, I'm Jill Mary.
To Spirit of America.
Just swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That was a little hard.
And I miss so long to share with you and so long as I shall continue to live.
So long.
I told you.
I'm Jill Mary.
To Spirit of America.
Just swear.
But I believe in this tribe.
So be blessed.
To the best of my abilities.
Best of my abilities.
The journey's to come in economy as well.
The journey's to come in economy.
The basis to the economy. In part of town. For the May 16th.
For the May 16th.
Twenty twenty-three. The April 10th.
April 10th.
According to the Constitution of the United States.
According to the Constitution of the United States.
Good evening. Can you go ahead? You all right? Okay, good. That vote was a little bit... Something a little bit familiar.
You've got to go to the microphone.
Okay, all right. Let me run this again. How is that?
Better.
Better, okay. So, the first order of business is to... And please bear with me, this is my first time doing this, although I run many meetings over across my career. But this is the first time I've been moderating, so I'm very honored to have that bestowed on me tonight. So thank you. The first order of business would be to allow any non-voters the privilege to speak for the meeting. We have... Non-voters would be Julie House. Emily Thompson, I can see you, I'm sorry. And Christine Cole. How's that? Are there any other names that should be included? Do I have a motion? Does it have a seconded? Is there any discussion? Have a vote? All in favor? Okay. Very good. So let's begin. Article two, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the general government wages. Do I have a motion? We have a motion, we have a seconded. We have a seconded. Have any discussion?
I move... I move to approve the select board recommendation.
We have discussion, yes. Yes, if you want to speak, go to the mic, yes. That's what...
If you want to speak, we should go to the microphone.
We should go to the microphone, yes. State your name and... Thank you, Robert. Is there any comment?
Why is there a difference?
The question is, why is there a difference?
There's a difference between the 8.7% cost of living increase and the budget committee recommended 6%. So we have a... It's up to you to decide where you'd like to see the wages go for next year. I believe the school is at five for a cat and parents mothers. So it's really up to you and the Democrats to where you want that to come in.
Any other questions? See you none, I call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Motion carries. Article three, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for insurance and benefits. We have a motion? We have a seconded. Is there any discussion? See you none, I call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Any opposed? Article four, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for town administration. Call for a motion?
So moved.
So moved. We have a seconded. Any discussion? See you none, I call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Article five, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for legal... Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded, we have a seconded. Is there any discussion? See you none, I call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Any opposed? Vote.
I can't hear you.
The request is to revisit article three.
I did vote in the affirmative, but I noticed that what we voted on is the recommendation of the 6%, not the 8.7% that we voted on previously.
We would need a motion for reconsideration.
I move we reconsider that. Article three, to refund the increase that we voted approved in article two.
We have a motion and a second for reconsideration. Is there any discussion? All those in favor for reconsideration of article three? Signify by raising your hand. Any opposed? Motion does carry the... We reconsider.
I move that article three be approved with the 174,785% for insurance and benefits. Do you want the recommendation? It was not clear.
The motion is to approve the amount of 174,785, as stated on the warrant. We do have a motion on the floor, is there a second? There is a second, is there any discussion? I call for a vote, all those in favor? Signify by raising your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Article six, to see what sum the town will vote for to raise and appropriate for protection... A motion? We have a motion. We have a seconded. Any discussion?
Yes. For article six, the amount we're voting on is the 258,589?
Yes. Any discussion? Yes, sir. What is the difference? Between the two numbers?
The budget committee recommended was 257,465, and the difference would again represent the difference between the six and this 8.7%.
Any comments? See you none, I call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to amend the main public employee retirement system plan effective July 1st, 2023, for its current fiscal year five by this who have serviced under the regular plan AC prior to August 1st, 2021, to make all their service for the town of West Bath special plan 3C service and to permit the lump sum payment by July 31st, 2023 in the amount of $11,430 to the main public employee retirement system for an additional liability to the plan resulting from this change and to authorize the town administrator to sign the amended agreement between the town and the main public employee retirement system. Do we have a motion?
Sorry.
We have a motion and a seconded. Is there any discussion? Last call for any discussion? See you none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article eight, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for additional liability to the main public employee's retirement system of town of West Bath special plan 3C. Do we have a motion? We have a seconded. Is there any discussion? See you none, all those in favor? Signify by raising your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to appropriate our licensing fees and penalties collected during fiscal year 2023 to 2024, except for the recording fee that must be retained by the municipal clerk pursuant to state law as an additional payment to the annual control officer for services rendered to the town. Do I have a motion? We have a motion.
Seconded.
We have a seconded. Any discussion? See you none, I call for a vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article ten, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for harbor... Havers and waterways, excuse me. Do we have a motion? We have a seconded. This would be the $17,800 recommended in the warrant. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the amount not exceeding $15,800 in the shelter conservation account for the self-report contract and town vote expense. Do we have a motion? We have a seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, Robert.
I was asking if the $15,800 is part of what was just voted on.
The question was, is the $15,800 including what was voted of the previous article? The answer is yes. Any other? Any other comments? See you none, I call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Any opposed? Vote. Article twelve, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for sanitation. Do we have a motion? We have a seconded. Any discussion? The... The dollar amount according to the warrant is $16,600. If no further discussion, I call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Any opposed? It's a vote. Article thirteen, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for public works. The amount appropriated would be $888,000 according to the warrant. Do I have a motion? I have a motion. We have a seconded. We have a seconded. Is there any discussion? We have.
Good evening. My name is Bill Hagan. I lived on the Bird Point Road in West Bath, and I've lived here in Traveler Road for many years. And I'm speaking in support of the entire recommendation, but what would primary emphasis from my vantage point are on the importance of upgrading and improving that Bird Point Road this year? It is in terrible condition, and it's reached the point where the condition of the road is destroying armed automobiles driving the road, and the shoulders of the road and the road because of the storms recently to the point where they are clearly dangerous. So you've got a situation there where I see there's absolutely no alternative. Article nineteen talks about the Bird Point Road across from my house. Maybe inappropriate comment on the... Has been terrible erosion under the road in that condition. The money was made available last year and unspent. This year, that road is down about 24 inches on the riverside, and that is a serious problem with respect to safety. A heavy vehicle has been driving over that road, collapsed the road, and then we've got a terrible problem on our hands. So I'm here, I'm speaking in support of that. If you'll excuse me, Mr. Sheriff. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan. Are there any other comments? Can everyone hear me? Do I need the microphone? So I want to... Did identify yourself?
I'm Michael Gray.
Thank you.
So I want to add to Bill Hagan's sentiment. I drive a pickup truck and there's three places on the road now that aside which collapse so bad that we get around that by half across the step line, what we're doing for. It's getting dangerous. Tell where every public is because it's a big hump or it's old road or something, and even the last storm built the ditches up so much I had to put a cloud on it, cloud the three hour road closing out the road. I know the whole roads thing, but Bird Point Road is very, very... Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, Steve. Steve, you might get to speak into the mic, please.
We have a budget in the Warren Hill for $200,000 in cost of the road this week. And all of this, it's in the budget. They do something, they also have money for the side. Call up this guy, start off the road statement. This budget gets approved, it will be working out.
Any further comments? See you none, I call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to negotiate a new volunteer contract with the current road snowplow contractor. We have a motion and a seconded. Any comment? I call for a vote, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Article fifteen, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for community agencies. That sum being according to the warrant, $7,696. Do we have a motion? We have a seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Article sixteen, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the patent-free library. According to the warrant, that sum being $39,365. Do we have a motion? We have a seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Motion carries. Article seventeen, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for planning board stipends. Recommended? Recommendation is $3,000. Do we have a motion? We have a seconded. Any discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to give all money received from the state of Maine for snowmobile registration to the Overton Hill ATV club for maintenance of their system or network of snowmobile trails, on the condition that those trails be open to the public for snowmobile purposes and no charge in the snow season, and to authorize the select board to enter into an agreement with the club under such terms and conditions as it deems advisable for that purpose. Do we have a motion? We have a seconded. Any discussion? We have a question.
Are these trails accessible during the spring or summer time? Like for biking? Or is it just the winter trail?
Are the trails accessible during the spring and summer season? Can anybody answer that question?
There's usually a sign that says it's closed for flood season. But other than that, yes.
The comment was, is the sign that says they're usually closed for flood season?
I think that's only closed for actual four-wheelers though, so they don't dig up the trench. I don't think it's for hiking and biking.
And so that purpose would be for four-wheelers, non-ferrous hiking. Any other clarifications? Any other comments? No questions. See you none, I call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Opposed? We have a vote. Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to carry forward all remaining appropriated by unexpended funds at the end of fiscal year 2022 to 2023 from the general assistance, ambulance service, salvage warden, Bird Point shoreline stabilization and revaluation accounts, provided that the funds are used for the same purpose as originally designated. Do we have a motion? We have a seconded. Any discussion? See you none, oh? Could you stand, sir? I'm sorry. We'll let the road experience that.
That's actually two different parts of the plug-in. They're always getting at the... And it falls on the tie forehead and out. But he's actually putting money inside for it and trying to get some neutral aid out. Still, those many were...
Most of them were.
But the other comment we asked for, I mean, is to... What we're gonna do, we've got two different projects coming along now. They have... They're gonna have to vote for the tie broken. So that project's been a little work. Trying to get money started for the last five years.
Well, we got the money.
We're not sure, we haven't been able to understand. We haven't been able to figure out. It's a deal, it's...
The comment was to allow the town administrator to address this.
Okay, I'm not sure that I heard the entire question, but I think it was about the erosion part of Bird Point Road. Is that correct? Okay, article nineteen is asking that we carry forward the appropriation from last year that was approved at town meeting for Bird Point shoreline stabilization. And it was specific to that project. Last year, a town meeting incorporated $250,000 for Bird Point shoreline stabilization. Road commissioner was not able to begin that project, so we're asking to carry over that full amount to be used toward that project. full amount to be used toward that project.
You just have spoken, Robert.
Oh, the fan, it's too loud. Yeah, I turned off the fan, it's all too loud.
Can we turn off the fan?
The question is whether that money is in addition to the money we just voted at two hundred and one thousand. So there's lots of money for that. That's good.
Are there any other comments? We have a question.
My name's Lexi Gifford. My question is, uh, if the funds were allocated last year, how do we ensure that the project is going to be completed this year and not carrying over the funds from the year's year?
Uh, Steve, I'd ask, uh, moderator, I'd ask you to stand and speak.
The long term, uh, we have the money to do this project, or we, or what do, maybe we did, or we don't want to, put lots of bid, we have the right, our money, and, uh, more. And, uh, we have to, uh, go with this. It's probably the next, uh, how, whether, uh, speak for someone. Trying to hold off, you know, the, uh, I knew when I was regulating, checking, uh, you know, it has, uh, like, uh, still, scandal enough, right?
Okay. Thank you. The moderator would recognize this conversation.
Just a quick, um, seeing why, why, you were speaking about the money you did. But it has, uh, did, uh, you spend all your time for your project, you can't do it. How much we can do?
Well, if we can do that amount, uh, the problem is, we've got it. The most problem is if we run into extra trouble and then we eat all of a sudden, we need another four hundred thousand dollars to do this project and work away this, uh, I don't know what I'm going to do.
Can we have a special town meeting? We have a town meeting.
Okay, we'll have a special town meeting, so we can get this project.
The question was asked, could we have a special town meeting? The select board answered in the affirmative.
I have a quick question. Have you been handed how much money you have to sign for the third date? I feel like every year, like, hundred thousand, I don't know. I couldn't hear, so. Is there any, I can't remember how much money we put into Burge Point today, like, a decade, etc.
We actually, we built, uh, that road like twelve years ago. And I believe it's like-
How many?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, twelve. That was across, we went three different sessions, still, three different years, so. We've known sixteen years, I guess.
I mean, I can, how much, that's fine.
How much?
How much we have put in during that time? The moderator would recognize a gentleman in the back row.
I can't hear no more.
Yes, sir.
I know, I know the road needs repair, but the road that road is, I can't hear it. Is it owned by the town today or what?
Yes.
The question, the question to the select board.
The town owns the road to approximately the loop road. So the town owns the road that is sinking under the influence of tides. It's our responsibility to take care of that road. And to my mind, we shouldn't be worried about what each road costs, because none of our roads, none of them, have ever been, except of course, in the industrial park formerly known as Wing Farm. None of those roads have been built to twentieth century standards, let alone twenty-first. And there's no way of going back and be building them. They're going to cost us money. That's what, that's what it takes for us to live in this beautiful place. We have old roads that need lots of maintenance. I'm not planning to move.
Is there any further questions or discussion? I call for a vote at the meeting. All those in favor signify by raising their hand. Opposed? Motion passes. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to transfer all remaining unexpended funds at the end of fiscal year 2022 to 2023 from the fire department operations to the fire department capital fund to be used for future capital building, vehicle, and or equipment expenditures. We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty-one, to see if the town will vote to transfer all remaining unexpended funds at the end of the fiscal year 2022 to 2023 from the general roads to the general roads capital fund to be used for future capital road expenditures. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Can we ballpark a month, as we were talking about?
The question is, do we, do we, can we ballpark in a month? Can anybody answer that?
It's being ballparked as we speak.
Any, any further comments?
It's, Julia's saying it's about two hundred. As of now. Is that in addition to the two hundred and fifty for Burge Point?
Any comments? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by raising their hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty-two, to see if the town will vote to transfer fifty thousand dollars from unassigned fund balance to the, to be deposited in the long-term capital improvement fund reserve account. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? See, and now, call, oh.
How much is in the fund now?
The question is, how much is in the fund? Julie, can you know that?
Eighty-nine thousand.
How much?
Six hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
Six hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
I have not taken a read down on the number yet.
The six hundred and eighty, so four, four hundred and thirty thousand is currently there. Five thirty. We're all apologizing. The message just got here.
The moderator will run calculations for that. Any other que, did you, did you, was your question answered? Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? See, and now I call for a vote. All those in favor signify by raising their hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to appropriate any anticipated revenues not otherwise dedicated for specific purposes to reduce the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 tax commitment. We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by raising their hand. Article forty-five, to see if the town will vote to authorize payment of tax payments approved by the select board assessors from the, select assessors from the property tax overlay, or if necessary, from the unassigned fund balance. I apologize. Let me go back. Ahead of myself. To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to appropriate, appropriate from unassigned fund balance an amount not to exceed eighty-eight percent of the total non-capital expenditure for fiscal year 2022 to 2023, and not otherwise appropriate herein to reduce the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 tax commitment. We have a motion. We have a second. We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising their hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to authorize the payment of tax payment approved by the select board's life assessors from the property tax overlay, or if necessary, from unassigned fund balance. We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising their hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to fix the date of October fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, as the date when fiscal year 2023, 2024 taxes shall become due and payable, and to charge eight percent on unpaid taxes after that date. We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? See, and now, call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote to set the interest rate to be paid by the town on abated taxes at four percent for fiscal year 2023 to 2024. We have a motion. We have a second. Any questions? See, yes, sir.
How much is it now?
How much is the current rate? Is that Christine with it? Two percent. Any other comments? See, and now I call for a vote. All those in favor signify by raising their hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote to set the interest rate to be paid by the town, oh, no, that, that, the article twenty-eight, to see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collection to accept prepayment of taxes. No interest shall be payable on any prepaid. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising their hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to direct the treasury to waive foreclosure of a real estate property tax named Morgue. If, if it determines such forceback can, can be invested in fiscal year. So, we have a second. Yes. We have any discussion? See, and now, call for a vote. All those in favor signify by raising their hand. Any opposed? Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to dispose of town-owned personal property with a value of over five hundred dollars and determine, and deemed by the select board to be surplus on such terms as it deems advisable. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? See, and now, all those in favor signify by raising their hand. Any opposed? Motion passes. Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to sell and dispose of all tax-acquired property held by the town on such terms as it deems advisable, and to execute quick, plain deed to such property, except that the select board shall use the special sale process applied by thirty-six MR S. section nine forty-three C. for qualifying homestead property if it chooses to sell it to anyone other than the former owners. So, we have a second. Any discussion? See, and now, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article thirty-two, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to apply for and accept state, federal, or other grants included from the American Rescue Plan, otherwise known as AFR, on behalf of the town for municipal purposes, including, when necessary, the authority to sign grant contracts, documents, and other paperwork, and accepted conditions that accompany grant funds, and to appropriate and expend such funds for authorized purposes as the select board deems to invest in fiscal year during the upcoming fiscal year. Do you want to repeat? We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to accept conditional or unconditional gifts of real property, provided that no single gift would obligate the town from their liabilities that total one thousand dollars or more per year, as determined by the select board. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? See, and now, all those in favor? Opposed? Article thirty-four, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to accept or reject donations to personal property and/or accept or reject gifts of money in various amounts of the town for the ensuing fiscal year, and to appropriate those monies donated for specific purposes. We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? See, and now I call for a vote. All those in favor? Article thirty-five, to see if the town will vote to maintain and exercise as appropriate its rights to take river air from the New Meadows Plate, consistent with the terms and conditions specified at the March nineteen seventy-seven town meeting. Motion and a second. Any discussion? See, and now, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article thirty-six, to see if the town will vote to maintain a fishway on the Woody Dance Lake and can exercise its rights to take river air, in accordance with the terms and conditions specified at the June nineteen eighty-eight town meeting, and in agreement with the city of that and the town of Delaware. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? See, and now, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article thirty-seven, showing ordinance entitled twenty twenty-three amendments to the town of West Bath Development Review Ordinance regarding application submission deadlines be enacted. We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Moderator sees no discussion. Calls for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article thirty-eight, showing ordinance entitled twenty twenty-three amendments to the town of West Bath Land Use Ordinance Regarding Meditation Powers be enacted. We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? See, and now I call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Article thirty-nine, showing ordinance entitled twenty twenty-three amendments to the town of West Bath Land Use Ordinance Regarding Live Entertainment be enacted.
Salute.
Salute. Second? We have a second. Yes.
Okay. Um, everybody's explanation of this is something before.
Steve.
I can speak loud. My name's Tom Close. I live at, on New Meadows. I'm, uh, here kind of a part for Trinkin Brewery. The ordinance currently states you can't have any live music, or entertainment, or dancing, anything to that effect. We have in this bill, or this, uh, ordinance, stated that it can't be played, or music or entertainment cannot be played after nine P M. and in that area. Does that answer your question?
Any other questions? Moderator, call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Any opposed? Motion passes. Article forty, showing ordinance entitled twenty twenty-three amendment to the town of West Bath main resource funds of making ordinance be enacted. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? See it none, I call for a vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article forty-one, this requires a writ of ballot by statute, to see if the town will vote to increase the property tax levy limit established for the town of West Bath by state law, if the municipal budget approved, and the perceived annual result in a tax commitment that is greater than the property tax levy limit. We have a motion. We have a second. Chris, could you speak to the mic on that? It doesn't say anything.
It's unnecessary to take a vote because we do not exceed our levy limit if this budget passes as proposed.
So it's unnecessary to withdraw the motion? Okay, we have a motion to withdraw. Second, and that ends, no discussion. All right, we don't vote on that. Article forty-two, to see if the town will vote to add coverage for full-time non-teacher plan school support employees under its main public employee retirement system, participate in local district plan as follows. The town agrees to add coverage for full-time non-teacher plan, school support employees who regularly work at least thirty-six hours per week under its regular plan AC effective July first, twenty twenty-three, and to allow the local school support employees who elect to join main public employee retirement system on July first, twenty twenty-three, to purchase private service credit for employment with the town of West Bath and/or West Bath School Department of four July first, twenty twenty-three, and to authorize the school board to enter into an agreement with the non-teacher plan, school support employees who elect to join main public employee retirement system on July first, twenty twenty-three, regarding whether the town slash school will share in the cost of purchase, cost to purchase private service, and if so, to what degree, and directs the school board to provide main public employee retirement system with a signed copy of that agreement. To authorize the town administrative to sign the amended agreement between the town and the main public employee retirement system. We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, Phil.
Joe, I'm not going to get up until I get up, I'm playing. I'm just going to ask about, about security in this building. I don't know whether it covers anywhere else in the meeting today, but I'm curious what happens here. Do we have something on site, or do we have some practice?
I believe your question would not be related to this particular.
I agree, I didn't know it was going to be related.
I, the moderator could address that with you at, at, at a different time, yes. Do we have a motion, we have a second, is there any other discussion? See it none, all those in favor? We did a second. Any opposed? Motion carries. The Senator gave forty-three and? Forty-three through fifty-four. We have a second. So that would make sense, we need two-thirds vote in order to do that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? The two-thirds vote has been met, we will, that motion carries, we will take those, this one vote. Do I have a motion? We have a motion. This would mean to accept those, those articles. We have a second. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Clarification on which amount to vote on in article fifty-four?
The question is a clarification on which amount to vote on article fifty-four? So the question, the question is, are we voting for two million six hundred sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars and forty-five cents? I would direct that to the school, uh, school superintendent or the school board.
I'm mentioning sub-motion within that.
Oh, you're making, you, you are making a motion.
Within that, I'm mentioning, I'm mentioning.
Yep. I understand. So, we have a motion that the amount authorized needed two million six hundred sixteen thousand seven hundred forty-five dollars as recommended by the school board of directors. We have a second on that, any discussion?
The two million six hundred sixteen thousand seven hundred forty-five cents is the whole amount, how about two million three hundred and forty-eight thousand six hundred sixty-four dollars and forty-five cents to the local appropriation?
So, so it's not an either-or, one is, is a subset of the other. That is correct. So the lower figure is the amount to be raised by taxes, the higher number would be what the total appropriated would be. There will be grants and those kinds of things that were included in that and other. So. So you withdraw your motion? You would still be to appropriate that amount, right? Which would be the total amount, right? That is correct. As I understand it, that they would both be included in that, the original motion, as that is, the original motion would be for the, the line of sum.
You're voting on the articles that's presented, you're, the month's last evening, we're getting money from the state, which is the difference between the raised and appropriated. It's, there's, it's not an either-or here, it's, it's the same money, there's just an allocation coming from somewhere other than your tax dollar, so you really need to vote on the article, and that, if both the bounds are accurate.
Let me try to clear, clear the floor for what I put on.
So he's asking for clarification, not a separate motion.
Just to verify that last article fifty-four, is the sum of forty-three, forty-three through fifty-four?
Is there any other discussion? So the, the moderator understands this, that we are voting on a consent of articles forty? Forty-three through fifty-four. We have a motion, we have a second, is there any further discussion? See it none, call for a vote, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Article fifty-five, this does require my law of writ of ballot. To see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate in addition to local funds, the school board of directors recommends one million five hundred and eight thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents, which exceeds the state's essential programs and services allocation model, by the school board of directors recommends one million four hundred fifty-eight thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents, as required by the budget recommended by the school board of directors. The school board of directors recommends one million five hundred and eight thousand dollars, four hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents for additional local funds, and gives the following reason for exceeding the state's essential programs and services funding model by one million four hundred fifty-eight thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents. The additional local fund represents the local cost to support school budget programs and services that are not included in the state funded model, including costs for transportation and special education services. That is voting, that is the warrant. Is there a motion? We have a motion, we have a second.
At this time, I ask that you fill out your pink ballots and put them in the voting box to the right, and we'll go to check them, thank you.
Yeah, remember the, well, so, I sent you the white one, said two six. And I, I actually double-checked. Is part of a larger, it doesn't just stand alone, like, so, I'm going to try to, I still like it. Well, they already, so in this amended version of the seventy-six. No, that's a different bill, that's two different bills. As, you have a one-year extension. Yes. If for town meeting towns, six months for town council. Well, has, has everybody voted? All right, we'll take a brief recess, so that we can, let's see if you have, do the votes. It's pretty safe, it actually. And that happens, it's a double check. It's easier for me to, than, like, I can do it, but I was thinking that maybe it looked like something. Or early in the morning, right? But yeah, I've been trying to connect with, maybe the social association that's had it, wasn't like this. And it seems to have, no, not really, they obviously look. Undeserved, in my, I'm just housing, kind of like, they put, and then it's like the bad guy, because they, so, and it's like, it's always. Forty-eight later came to a select. Yeah, oh, it's so distinct, every, it would help us, every time, like. Yes, it's, it's not, it's not the Wild Wild West, it's like move back, the housing, the building code. So, deciding to move back, right, every town in Maine, but only town to a four thousand building, so it's like, it's like, move back, move back, probably everything's, M U, M B, A B C. Living without one. But, um, so, yeah, so, 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 towns like mine, they don't have a, so, 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 I can, I'll get a sketch. Yeah, I, yeah, do you know?
I already know he's a serious.
I can, I'll get a sketch. Yeah, I, yeah, do you know?
I already know he's a serious.
So, the other thing.
You have a beanbag order?
That motion passes with thirty-six in favor and nine opposed.
Article forty-six. Fifty-six. Burn a time warp here, okay? Article fifty-six, to see what sum the town will vote to authorize the school board of directors to expend for fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-three, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-four, from the school administrative unit's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in the essential programs and services funding act, non-state funds, school construction projects, additional local funds, for school purposes under the main revised statute, Article twenty-eight, second fifth, one five six nine zero. under the main revised statute, Article 20A, Section 515690, undesignated unbalances, tuition receipts, state subsidy, and other receipts from the support of schools. The school board of directors recommends $4,402,942.37. We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir. Recognize no reply.
Uh, do you know what our students lost if you say that down? Like upward and...
If you could use the microphone.
The current, um, per people cost of the elementary levels, that's maybe the seventeen thousand two hundred eighty dollars difference.
Hold on.
May I?
Yes.
Do you have any idea how you compare the local pounds? Where, I'm guessing my wife's... How do you compare it all?
When we compare ourselves to districts that are of similar makeup or similar size at the elementary level, we can very well compare. When we compare ourselves to large school districts, then we're not.
Are there any other questions? See and none. Moderator calls for a vote. All those in favor signify by raising their hand. Opposed? Motion carries. Article fifty-seven. Shall the school board of directors be authorized to transfer amounts exceeding five percent of total provision for any cost center to another cost center or among other cost centers for the 2023-2024 fiscal year, provided that transfers do not be permitted to increase the authorized total school budget? We have a motion. We have a second. We have a second. Is there any discussion? See and none. I call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article fifty-eight. In addition to the amount in Article fifty-six, shall the school board of directors be authorized to accept and expend any state, federal, or other grants, aid, or receipts during the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023, and end in June 30th, 2024, for school purposes, provided that such grants, aid, and receipts do not require the expenditure of other local funds not previously appropriated? We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? See and none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article fifty-nine. In the event that the town receives more state education subsidy than the amount included in its budget, shall the school board of directors be authorized to use all of the additional state subsidy to increase expenditures for school purposes in cost center categories approved by the school board of directors, increase the allocation of finances in the reserve fund approved by the school board of directors, and/or decrease the local cost share expectation as defined in Article 20, Section 15671-A, Subsection 1, Subsection Paragraph B, for local property taxpayers for funded public education as approved by the school board of directors? So move. We have a second. Is there any discussion? See and none. I call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other business to bring before this meeting? See and none.
I'm taking here. I just wanna thank all of you. Hey, boys. I hope you vote. Don't have to be like, oh.
Moderator. Recognizing Mr. Ennisson.
What can we have in place in the event of emergencies? Unfortunately, considering the challenges we're having in the country with schools?
I'll, I'll just quickly address, address that. And I can't further conversation with that with anyone. But, uh, I deputies do, uh, stoplight a school on a very regular basis here. Uh, and we, um, have an emergency response plan that has been approved by the school and the school board and that they shared with us. And so, we feel that we're pretty confident to address any of those issues. The other good thing about that is we're in a location right here, this particular location, this particular building, where we have access to many additional resources, uh, such as our neighbor, our neighbors and, and our large police departments. Um, and we have the related agreements with them. So if there was ever a situation that occurred here, we would have certainly adequate staff and, and really have heard you come on down. Is there any other business to bring before this meeting? Yes, sir.
I'd just like to take this opportunity on my behalf, and I think many people in this room will probably agree with me, that I feel very fortunate that we have a Sagittawatch County Sheriff's Department that is so well-received, so respected, and such a quality organization. And I want to just say thank you.
I'm humbled by that. Thank you very much. Is there any other business to come before this meeting? We have a motion put here. We have a second. We have a second. All in favor?